Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 26, 2021 City Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Kalmak.
Here.
Mayor Protim Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item?
So I'd like to pull item J.
Item J, okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, four supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you very much. I'll now call for a motion and a second for items that were not pulled from the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Thank you. City Clerk, could we have a vote by roll call?
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes 5-0. Now, we're going to have a presentation of our new water operator. And so I will call upon Steve Meider to do that, please.
Thank you all, the mayor, members of the council. I would like to interview, like to welcome our newest Public Works Department team member, who was selected for this position of water operator, Joseph Santiago. He has over seven years' experience with various water agencies, with experience both in water distribution and water production. He is currently pursuing degrees in water distribution and water treatment at San Diego College. Joseph currently holds a Grade II State Water Operator license in distribution, as well as a Grade II State Water Operator's license for water distribution. At this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation over to Joseph. Joseph?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. I would like to say that I'm very excited to be the newest member of the Public Works team, and I am extremely proud to be given the opportunity to serve the people of Seal Beach.
Thank you very much, Joseph, and welcome to Seal Beach along with the other Josephs that we have here. Okay, it's now time for oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the City Clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the City Council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any email comments?
Yes, one email comment, and then we received one comment via US Mail. Those comments have been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Very good, thank you. I'll have a city attorney's report. City Attorney Steele, do you have anything for us this evening?
A no report this evening, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor, I have one item tonight. I wanted to share with the council and our community that the city received its first payment for the new American Rescue Plan Act, commonly referred to as ARPA. Our first payment was over $2.8 million. This represents 50% of the amount allocated to the city of Seal Beach. The second half is expected to be distributed to the city in July of next year, 2022. As you know, this act provides funding to state and local governments directly for relief from responding to COVID-19. The US Department of Treasury is still issuing guidance on how these funds can be used, so we have not programmed these funds for anything specific as of yet. However, the funds have been set aside in a separate fund. We are hoping to receive more information in the coming weeks, and our Finance Director Kelly Telford will plan to give an update on these funds, as well as others, in a COVID-19 funding update presentation at the August 9 council meeting. That concludes my comments tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll have council comments, general council member comments, and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. I'll call on each council member. We'll start with Councilman Verapapa.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kalmak. I attended the McGaw Pool Ad hoc committee. No decisions were made, we just basically talked about where we've been with the pool and, and, and just kind of setting the stage for our next meeting. Basically, we're looking at, you know, keeping it at McGaw at this time and kind of moving forward. And it was basically just a recap meeting for the pool. Also, I didn't make it to the Music in the Park the other day, and boy, that was well received, there's a lot of people there, and everybody looked like they were having a good time and, you know, being well behaved. And that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Masalavet, your comments.
Well, I attended the vector control meeting, and it seems as though the West Nile virus so far this year has not made itself known. But in other counties, there seems to be an increase in bites from West Nile virus-infected mosquitoes. So it's only a matter of time before Orange County sees its share of infections. There was also a request from the city to Vector about a rodent issue down near the pier. Vector came out immediately and was working with city staff to remedy the issue, and hopefully, we will solve it as best we can. Sometimes little critters are hard to manage. Anyway, the other committee I went to was the Orange County Sand District. They are, of course, moving on with all of their projects. We can continue to see the one down Westminster. If you drive past Bull, so it's pretty active down there. And I just want to remind people to be careful. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Councilmember Sistarsik?
Good evening. I wanted to report that I attended the Fourth of July event at the, at Heather Park, put on by the College Park East Neighborhood Association. And I wanted to thank OCFA from Garden Grove. Their engine company is escaping right now, but for them coming over and giving the kids a tour of their fire engine, a lot of fun. Also, went over to the JFTV for Fourth of July event over there, and thanked them for putting on a nice show. It was a drive-through event, so everyone was in or around their cars, but still a good show. I wanted to report that US Olympic Women's Water Polo is off to a great start. They are headquartered over there at the JFTV, and they're doing well. And I wanted to thank Anthony Nguyen for organizing pickups for food finders at Edison Gardens. I think that's a, just a great idea, because there's always an abundance of either tomatoes or zucchinis or something, and it's nice that that can go to a good home and help people out. So, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, mayor. I met with Supervisor Foley last week with Mayor Kalmak regarding the parking situation for the condos on Montecito. We're planning to meet with her next month and to see how we can work with the county to help out with some of the parking solutions in that area. And I'd just like to thank Supervisor Foley and also thank Mayor Kalmak, both for helping to look at this, and that's all I have, thanks.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple of things, in case folks haven't heard. Congresswoman Michelle Steele, I was able to make the final push, you know, culminating in all the work that our previous congresspeople, some residents in Surfside, that it looks like the $15.5 million has been appropriated to replenish the sand at Surfside, which is really a, has a much bigger impact than just our residents in Surfside. This means that the beaches in Huntington Beach and Newport Beach will also be nourished as time goes by from the sand replenishment. So we appreciate the help that we finally got, it's been several years. I've attended our Los Ritos Wetlands Authority meetings. It looks like that, for several reasons, the wetlands restoration project that will be in Seal Beach on the Hellman Ranch property has actually gotten initial funding to start the plan for that restoration. This is still, you know, a few years away, but it's, it's being started. And so, you know, if we, if we all take good care of ourselves and live a longer life, we'll hopefully be able to see restored wetlands on the Hellman Ranch property. Just a note on my attendance at the OCFA meetings. We're, we're finally hearing amongst the other board members of concerns for the contract cities, of which Seal Beach is one. And that's good news, because as costs keep escalating, it's important for the Fire Authority to recognize the fact that, you know, our contract keeps going up every year. And so, there's a general view that we need to start taking a closer look at, at our expenses and, and so forth. So that's all I have to report tonight. Okay, council items, none. Consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members, which would be item J. So I'll call for a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
I, I will move, I'll second.
Okay. City Clerk, may we have a roll call for the vote?
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Verapapa, how do you, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor Protim Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Thank you very much. I'll now go to item J. City Manager Ingram, is there a staff report?
Yes, mayor, thank you. I'd like to ask our Finance Director Kelly Telford to present this item, and both Kelly and myself are available for any specific questions of council.
Thank you. In the fiscal year 2122 adopted budget, two new positions for the Finance Department were approved for classifications that do not currently exist in the classification plans. In order to fill these positions, the classification plans require amending to incorporate the position of Financial Analyst in the Regular Employees Classification Plan, and the position of Office Specialist in the Part-Time Employees Classification Plan. The Financial Analyst position would be a part of the Mid-Management and Confidential Employee Group, and is proposed at Grade 26, which is consistent with the Management Analyst position. The Office Specialist classification is a part-time position and would be unrepresented. The position is proposed at Grade 12, with an hourly rate ranging from $17.31 to $21.04 per hour. In addition, during the budgeting process, staff noted three positions in the Community Services Budget that were included in the part-time budget calculations, but were budgeted at full-time hours. In order to more appropriately classify and budget for these employees, we corrected this in the fiscal year 2122 budget development process. We are recommending that the City Council approve the Recreation Specialist Classification, which was formerly, formerly called Recreation Coordinator in the full-time pay schedule. It is recommended to approve the classification at Grade 8 based upon the responsibilities of these positions. Grade 8 is the lowest of the job classifications in the city's full-time pay schedule. In addition to the primary duties in your agenda report, I felt it was important to provide you with a comprehensive list of what these individuals do on a day-to-day basis. This includes the database supervision of the tennis center and, or the tennis and pickleball center, where activities have significantly increased over the last year, supervision of the Edison Park Gardens, contract class supervision, supervision of adult sports leagues, creation of quarterly newsletters and rec sites, management of the recreation software, supervision of athletic fields, the athletic field rentals, supervision of gym rentals, supervision of the senior transportation program, support of the senior meals program, and support of special events. In addition to these duties, the Community Services Department is currently evaluating the possibility of new programs or services, which include increasing senior services, new community special events, and a new community volunteer program. In conclusion, approval of this item would create these classifications in the full-time pay schedule and part-time pay schedule, and would allow the city to recruit and fill these vacant positions. That concludes my brief presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Any council member comments?
Yes. My question is, if we are kind of creating a permanent paid position from the temporary positions, should we have, you know, the, why are we not using Coff and the, the Coffin Associates to kind of look at what other cities pay and make the appropriate job classification and what grade and what, what level they should be at?
Mayor, if I could, I'll address that. Primarily, as a city manager, it's my responsibility to work with staff to ensure that positions are properly classified and compensated relative to responsibilities required of each position. This isn't a new classification for Seal Beach Recreation Specialist. It's a new full-time position, and it's, we've been using it for a number of years in our part-time pay schedule. They've actually been working as part-time recreation coordinators, which is currently a full-time position in our full-time pay structure. So as we've said in the staff report, as I've discussed with each one of you, I strongly feel that this, this particular position, converting these part-time positions to full-time recreation specialists is appropriate. And we've, and I'm, and I'm recommending that they be established at Grade 8, as Kelly mentioned. Although we have grades 1 through 7 currently in our full-time pay structure, we haven't had any position classifications in those grades. And Grade 8 currently is, is the lowest paid position in our city. And as you can see, based on the staff report and based on Kelly's summary tonight, those three positions oversee several of our programs and services and recreation and community services. So we feel very strongly that this, this position has been appropriately classified at Grade 8 as a full-time recreation specialist.
Did we look at possibly like one or two full-time and one, or why are all three going to full-time?
Because all three currently, all three part-time recreation coordinators are currently working full-time hours, and they have been for several years at 40-plus hours per week.
And can you address, like, I understand that they're gonna get a, a nice significant bump in pay because they're becoming permanent employees. I hadn't realized it was 37%, the resident pointed out. Is, can't we create a lower step grade for a new job classification? So they're still get a nice increase, yet not 37%?
Well, I, quite honestly, the council has the prerogative to do what you want to do. As I've mentioned before, it's staff's recommendation. That's before you tonight, we feel is the most appropriate grade. I would encourage you, instead of looking at a percentage increase, to think about ensuring that your staff, both part-time and full-time, are properly classified and compensated based upon the responsibilities that are required of each position. And in the job classification that's part of your staff report, it does indicate that we, we hope to recruit and retain current, and there's one, because one out of the three positions is vacant now, because we had a part-time employee that, that earned his bachelor's degree and was able to earn a full-time position in another agency. We hope with this level of position that we're able to hire and retain the two employees that we have, but hire employees that have a bachelor's degree. We're getting a pretty good deal at Grade 8. If you look at the pay scale to have, to have someone with a bachelor's degree and relative recreation experience that's interested in serving the community of Seal Beach.
What are the cost of pension benefits and, you know, over the next few years? Is that a big amount, or how much is that?
If I could jump in here, Jill. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that based on them being part-time employees in the past, they will be Pepper employees. Obviously, for our one vacant position, we can't guarantee that that position would be hired and filled by a Pepper employee. But the two existing individuals that we have would be Pepper. If I could also go back for just one moment. When asked the question about the significant increase in the pay, I think it really should be put into context. While the 30-plus percent seems like a large number, the hourly rate for these positions is $26 an hour on the low end. The, one of the other positions in this agenda report, and that's the part-time office specialist position, the range is $17 to $21 an hour. So that's not that large of a spread between an entry-level office specialist position that does not require a bachelor's degree. You know, it's, it's usually filled with, you know, someone who doesn't have a ton of, of office experience. At 17 to 21, going up to $26 an hour for the, the, um, these community or recreation specialist positions is not, it's not a significant dollar increase. It's just a, a large percentage, because the dollars were so low, essentially.
Yeah, hi, this is Mike, I'd like to make a point too, if I may. You know, I've had the luxury of going over to the pickleball and tennis center a lot lately and, and, and just observing the work that's being done over there. And as hard as the employees are working that I see, there is a need for, you know, additional help. It's my understanding too, that, you know, one of the employees has been here for, for many, many, many years, and he hasn't been, you know, duly compensated, for lack of a better term. But I think the compensation justifies the work that's being done and the amount of work that they do. I mean, not just at the tennis center, but just all around town with the, you know, the, the rec department and all these other different duties that are incorporated upon these people. I think it's important that we catch up to these other cities that I've been observing in, in, in my, you know, studies just this past year, what's going on with other surrounding cities there. They're so much more efficient, and they're so much, you know, you know, staffed correctly, if you will. And I think it's high time that we do the same thing. And I think the percentage isn't as important as the nominal, you know, fee that's being raised. And I think we should move forward with the recommendation from the city. That's my two cents worth, thank you. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve item J.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second?
Thank you, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes 4-1. Next, we have a public hearing on item O. And we will have interim Community Development Director Barry Curtis present this to us.
Good evening, Mayor Kalmak, members of the City Council, members of the public. I'm going to apologize in advance for what's going to be a fairly lengthy, detailed presentation, but I think it's important to fully explain the changes in state law that now impacts the city of Seal Beach. With that, zoning text amendment 21-1 is essentially a state-mandated update to the city's accessory dwelling unit standards. The proposed changes are directed from the state. They're technically already in place as a result of 2019, 2020 legislation, which invalidated and superseded any local ordinances that were in conflict. Aside from that, it's important for the city to adopt a compliant ordinance, because the State Department of Housing and Community Development is tasked with reviewing such ordinances and can forward its concerns to the state attorney general, advising the attorney general that it believes the ordinance is not consistent with state law. Probably of more importance than that, however, is that adopting a compliant ADU ordinance will put the city in a better place with HCD as we work with its staff through what will be a very challenging housing element update process. Next slide, please. My presentation will include a background, an overview of recent ADU legislation, the proposed ADU and junior ADU standards necessary to meet state law, a secret determination, and a recommended action. Next slide, please. Past city action regarding accessory dwelling units includes the adopted Zone Text Amendment 18-2, which was approved in 2019. That amendment addressed legislation from 2016, 2017, 2018, and was intended to increase the housing supply by facilitating more ADUs. Zoning Text Amendment 18-2 limited the city's prior regulation of ADUs, but it allowed, it did allow the city to regulate tenure, zoning districts, lot area, the size of the ADU, and to require owner occupancy. Next slide, please. In October 2019, the governor signed multiple bills that took effect on January 1, 2020. These included Assembly Bills 88, I'm sorry, 881, 68, 670, and Senate Bill 13. The provision of these laws automatically superseded the city's previous ADU ordinance. Because of the multiple bills, there were some disconnects and slight differences in addressing ADU-related issues. While a bit confusing, these various requirements can be reconciled and do work together. Next slide, please. The first piece of new legislation I'll discuss is Assembly Bill 881. It was a lengthy bill, and it will take several slides to cover everything contained in it. These new provisions include that accessory dwelling units are now allowed in all residential zones. They're also allowed in mixed-use zones under certain conditions. ADUs and junior ADUs must be approved within 60 days if they meet certain criteria. The city can no longer require a minimum lot size requirement. ADUs are now required to be allowed within a primary dwelling, as well as attached to or detached from such a dwelling. There's no absolute maximum building area for attached ADUs. It's just required that they be allowed to be 50% of the area of the single-family dwelling. Next slide, please. The city can no longer require specific side yard and rear yard setbacks greater than four feet. And no additional setback can be required for conversions of existing legal non-conforming accessory structures or garages located in the same location. The city must also allow garage conversions and no replacement parking can be required if the garage is removed or converted to create an ADU. And as I mentioned a second ago, no owner occupancy requirement is allowed between now and January first, twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. There are also new limits on the maximum unit sizes that we may allow. Basically, there's a floor on what must be allowed. For studio and one-bedroom ADUs, we have to allow a unit that is up to eight hundred and fifty, I mean, I'm sorry, at least eight hundred and fifty square feet in area. For ADUs with more than one bedroom, we have to allow an ADU that's at least a thousand square feet in area. And where it's percentage base, which really applies to attached accessory dwelling units, the city must allow an ADU which is at least eight hundred and fifty square feet. For maximum sizes for an attached ADU, as I indicated, it's fifty percent of the primary dwelling is the maximum. And for a detached ADU, it's twelve hundred square feet in area. Next slide, please. And I said it'd be a bunch of slides on this one, but this is the last slide pertaining to Assembly Bill eight eighty-one. Four types of ADUs must be approved ministerially by the city. These are an ADU within an existing or proposed single-family or primary residence, a detached accessory dwelling unit that meets the following criteria. It's no more than eight hundred square feet in area. It's no more than sixteen feet in height and it provides a minimum four-foot setback from the side and rear property lines. The third type we must approve is one or more ADUs within non-habitable spaces and, and that includes garages and carports within multifamily dwellings. It's one or more, and the reason it's one or more is because the number is actually up to twenty-five percent of the total number of units on a project with one being guaranteed. And finally, multifamily properties are also allowed to detached accessory dwelling units on the lot subject to the following standards. The detached ADUs can't be more than sixteen feet in height and they must provide minimum four-foot side and rear setbacks. Next slide, please. Regarding Assembly Bill sixty-eight, this related to junior accessory dwelling units or JADUs. A junior ADU must be located within a single-family residence and the area of a junior ADU must be five hundred square feet or less. It must have kitchen, its own kitchen facilities, but it's allowed to share sanitation facilities or bathroom facilities with the main unit. And with a JADU, the owner must reside in either the JADU or the primary dwelling. So a little different for the junior ADUs than the, than the regular ADUs. Next slide, please. Regarding Senate Bill thirteen and Assembly Bill sixty-six seventy, Senate Bill thirteen allows for a five-year deferral from building code violations that are not related to health and safety. This, this provision would sunset on January first, twenty thirty. And Assembly Bill six seventy stipulates that CCNRs for lots, zone for single-family dwellings may not prohibit or unnecessarily, or I'm sorry, unreasonably restrict the provision of ADUs or junior ADUs. Next slide, please. Additional legislation was approved in, in twenty twenty and it's also now in effect. This, the main one is Assembly Bill thirty-one eighty-two. This legislation was in many ways an attempt to reconcile and clean up various components of the twenty nineteen legislation. It added a deemed approved clause to the sixty-day ministerial clock. The city must now allow one ADU and one junior ADU on most properties where it previously was either or. It clarified that owner occupancy limits for single-family lots. And finally, it further limited the ability of homeowners associations to regulate issues such as limiting renting or leasing within their jurisdiction. That one doesn't technically apply to the city, but it certainly applies to some places, some residences and properties within the city. Next slide, please. Just as a quick historical background, since the city adopted its initial ADU legislation in twenty sixteen, we've approved one ADU. It's currently under construction and we have three more that are currently in plan check. Next slide, please. Sorry, I lost my place. The new, new standards, I apologize. The new standards include the intent, standards for ADUs and JADUs and state compliant and general development standards. Next slide, please. This slide lists the three types of accessory dwelling units that must now be allowed. Next slide, please. The illustrations on this slide are for the three types of accessory dwelling units. There is an attached ADU, which is what it sounds like. You can see it on the left. It's, it's abutting the, the existing structure, detached, which is not attached, and conversion, which is a, a conversion of a portion of the existing structure to, to an ADU. That is similar to a junior ADU, but it, it's not constrained to the maximum five hundred square foot area. Depending on the type of accessory dwelling unit, some impacts might vary. An obvious example would be an internal conversion where aesthetics and setbacks and height would not be an issue at all. Where allowed, and this is very limited, some requirements may vary based on the type of accessory dwelling unit and its potential for impacts. For example, the city's limited ability to impose size and setback standards in certain circumstances. Next slide, please. Regarding the number of accessory dwelling units allowed for single-family dwellings, as I said, it's, it's one accessory dwelling unit and one junior ADU. For multifamily dwellings, when it involves a conversion of, of unhabitable or unlived-in existing space, it's twenty-five percent of the total units, but one minimum. And the converted, converted space, as I said, must be non-livable space, but it can include garages and carports. Junior ADUs are not allowed for multifamily properties. In addition, two detached ED, ADUs are permitted. Next slide, please. Regarding the size of, of accessory dwelling units, there are minimum and maximum sizes in many cases, minimum being basically a floor. In other words, an area that we must allow at least that size. Manded sizes are based on the type of accessory dwelling units, whether attached or detached, as well as the number of bedrooms. For ADUs with one or fewer bedrooms, we must allow an ADU that's at least eight hundred and fifty square feet in area. For ADUs with more than one bedroom, if it's attached, we must allow it to be at least a thousand square feet or fifty percent of the area of a single-family dwelling, whichever is greater. And if it's detached, we must allow an ADU that's at least twelve hundred square feet in area. Next slide, please. This table indicates the proposed ADU size requirements with one exception, these exactly mirror state law. Just as a reminder, we cannot be more restrictive than state law, but in many cases, we can be less restrictive. The one exception where we're proposing potentially less restrictive than what the state requires is, is a case where we would allow potentially a larger attached accessory dwelling unit at a single-family dwelling if the owner agreed to provide at least one off-site parking space for the ADU. Staff is recommending this maximum area be twelve hundred square feet in, in those cases. This figure of twelve hundred square feet is consistent with the state required minimum area for detached ADUs as well as what is currently allowed in this, in the existing zoning ordinance. Given the fairly drastic restrictions on the city to require parking for ADUs, which I'll discuss in a moment, staff believes an incentive to provide some parking would be beneficial potentially. Next slide, please. Regarding setbacks per state law, the maximum allowed setback requirement for side and rear yards is four feet for each. Recognizing that many properties in Old Town and Surfside are only required to provide a three-foot side yard setback, the draft ordinance was crafted to address this and be consistent with the other, with the, the normal zoning district standards. Otherwise, the proposed height and setback standards mirror existing standards. Next slide, please. This table shows the proposed setbacks. These meet local standards except where preempted, in which case they meet new state standards. Next slide, please. With regard to height, a one-story accessory dwelling unit is allowed to be a maximum of sixteen feet in height, not to exceed the height of the existing single-family home. So if the house is fourteen, it, the height is fourteen for the ADU as well. A two-story ADUs are subject to the height allowance in the zoning district. Staff believes that the combination of setback and height standards already within the, existing within the zoning ordinance when equally applied to second-floor ADUs will preserve the character and scale of its established neighborhoods consistent with the existing two-story structures allowed by right in all residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Regarding, regarding open space, lot coverage and open space requirements must allow for an ADU of at least eight hundred square feet. Therefore, the proposed standards maintain the existing open space requirements except to the extent that they're changed to allow an ADU that's at least eight hundred square feet in area. Larger ADUs are allowed to be the lesser of zoning districts' open space limit or the maximum size allowed for an ADU. Next slide, please. Regarding design standards, the city and staff is recommending this requires ADUs to have the same design, materials, finish and colors as the main structure on the property or structures. Staff believe there may be, believes there may be instances where a complementary rather than identical design might also be appropriate to allow for the possibility of some discretion. Staff is recommending that complementary design and materials rather than the exact same could be allowed through approval of a minor use permit. Next slide, please. The new legislation expands the zoning districts where ADUs and junior ADUs must be allowed. For ADUs, they're now permitted in any zone that allows residential uses. This includes multifamily zones. They are permitted in mixed-use developments if other residential uses are present. They may be prohibited in a resident, when a residential use is prohibited by the zoning district. In other words, an ADU would not be allowed if, if a residential use is non-conforming due to the zoning. The only example I can think of this would be the handful of residences on Main Street where the zoning doesn't allow residential uses. Junior ADUs are only permitted in residential zones, not in mixed use, mixed use or overlay zones, and only on a lot with one single-family home. Next slide, please. New limits on parking requirements include, per state law, the city cannot require parking for an ADU that meets any of these criteria. It's located within a half a mile of a transit or bus stop. That would be measured as a crow flies or as a radius, is I guess the other way to put that. It is located in an historic district. When the ADU is within the primary residence, the supply is to convert it in junior ADUs. When an ADU is on a street with parking permits, if the ADU occupant doesn't receive a permit. And finally, where car share, where there's a car share located with one, within a block of the ADU. The primary impactor of these on, on Seal Beach will be the proximity to a bus stop. Next slide, please. This slide or this exhibit illustrates just how impactful the proximity to a bus stop requirement is on the ability of the city to require parking for an ADU. The impacted areas are shown on red, in red. Those are all half-mile radiuses. If you could click one more time, please. Those areas shown in purple, kind of up at the upper left side, are the only residential areas in the city which are outside of a half-mile radius from a bus stop. As you can see, the only, the, only a small portion of Leisure World and a portion of College Park West are unaffected. Next slide, please. Compounding the almost complete inability for the city to now require parking for ADUs, state now, state law now prohibits the city from requiring replacement parking lost to creating an ADU when one, an existing garage or carport is converted to an ADU or a covered parking structure is demolished to be replaced with an ADU or converted to an ADU. The proposed standards attempt to incentivize the maintenance of parking by allowing larger ADUs, which is what I talked about a moment ago, in certain circumstances and also allowing ADUs to be located above preserved garages when on-street parking is provided for the ADU. Next slide, please. Other new requirements, as I talked earlier, ministerial approval is required, must be approved within sixty days. You probably gleaned it from previous comments, but ADUs will now be allowed in Old Town and Surfside. And regarding the development standards, to the extent allowed, again, very limited, zoning district standards will be what applies outside of, of super, being superseded by state law. Additionally, fire sprinklers can only be required for an ADU when they're also required for the main residential structure. Next slide, please. And finally, regarding operational standards, staff's attempted to maintain existing provisions except were now prohibited. Specifically, the ordinance will now allow ADUs in all zones, which allow residential uses on any lot with existing or proposed residential use. Minimum lot sizes, as I indicated, are no longer allowed as well as owner occupancy requirements are no longer allowed through January first, twenty twenty-five. Again, I talked earlier about this, but JD, ADUs on the contrary are required to be owner occupied of one of the two units. Next slide, please. Staff has determined the proposed text amendment is statutory, statutorily exempt from SEQA. Next slide, please. The planning commission considered the proposed text amendment on May seventeenth and voted four to one to recommend city council approval. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the city council introduce for first reading by title only an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach, amending Title eleven of the Seal Beach Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the provision, from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. That concludes my prepared remarks. I apologize again for the lengthy detailed presentation. I'm now available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I have questions.
Yes, Councilmember Masalabat.
In the resolution, it says, gosh, I didn't write down the, the page number, darn it. Oh, yeah, I did. Page three. In the resolution, page three, item A, talks about affordability and parking. Now, there is nothing in our ordinance here that is saying that these units have to be affordable in any way where I think that's the intent of the state law, to provide affordable housing. But we're not saying anything about that in the resolution in terms of how those units will be rented out and how affordable they, they will be. I think that, you know, the intent of the legislature in this horrible hor- horrible requirement they're putting on us is to provide affordable housing because, yeah, we do have a housing problem in this state. And yes, housing is very expensive. And yes, even affordable housing is too expensive for many people. So what are we doing to try and comply with that intent in terms of affordability? And the, and the parking issue, I find that where there is not parking required, I guess it's in the, the junior ADU, there will be issues for everyone in the community to deal with in terms of not having any parking in your area for all the housing that, that is going to be there or the additional housing now. Look at, well, I can only think of Fifteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth Street, Eight, Seventeenth Street and how the parking issues are on those streets, how the one-way streets are impacted horribly. Where are these additional dwelling units going to park? And I don't know if there's, I guess city attorney can tell me if there's any flexibility in terms of parking where there is a need to have off, off-street parking that we, that it must be provided. I have a problem with removing a garage and building a new structure and not requiring anyone to have any parking. You'll be on the street. That's at least three cars, maybe four more cars on the streets and in areas that are already impacted. I, I just, I am so dismayed about this, even though I understand the intent of it and but I'm, I just can't deal with this. And I mean, I know we're not supposed to talk about other things here, but there is additional legislation that is coming down, that's not very far from being approved, that's that's even going to impact the cities even more in terms of ADUs. So, you know, I need some direction from the city attorney in terms of flexibility and what we can do here as a city and what we can't. That's it.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I don't mean to be negative, but, I mean, the intent of the legislature in, in this twenty nineteen and twenty twenty round of legislation was to remove all flexibility. You know, there was, there was a little bit of, there was a little bit of discretion that was afforded to city councils in the earlier version of the ADU bill. You know, you could exclude them from certain districts for certain reasons. And, and some other, you know, some other items where the, where a city council could make a judgment based on unique local situations. The purpose of the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty legislation was to remove all that discretion and basically impose a set of standards and requirements statewide. Because the legislature believes that, you know, the housing crisis is caused by local agencies not approving housing, which everybody who serves in a local agency knows is not really the root of, of housing problems in this state. But, but then the second thing they did was, you know, expand the right to an ADU even further by adding these JADUs into the mix. So, I mean, in answer to your question about flexibility, there virtually is none allowed by the, by the state and, and whatever we could come up with to try to sort of get around some of this would almost certainly be questioned by HCD, which would potentially lead to problems getting our housing element certified. I think if you ask the, the authors of these bills about the affordability issue, the theory is that by theoretically, you know, removing land acquisition costs and reducing construction costs, they are making the production of affordable housing easier by by forcing these ADUs into communities where, you know, the owner already owns the land. That, that's the theory, whether, whether that's going to work is, you know, will be played out, although I think statistics that Barry showed about the small number of ADUs that have been developed in the city are played out over many different cities. At least in Southern California, they are, these laws aren't really producing a lot of units.
I would, I'd just like to add one point to sort of distill what what Barry and Sandra and Craig have said, and that's that what Barry presented here tonight is already state law. So this isn't a question of if we protest, or if we write letters, or if we jump up and down, that, you know, this won't happen. It's, it's already state law. And, and the fact that there are two other bills that have not passed, but have already passed the State Assembly, they could impact us even more. So it's a question of how we adapt. You know, the only, you know, mitigating factor, as I see it, is that not, doesn't mean everyone's going to run out and get a building permit to build an ADU. You still have to build one. And with construction costs as they are today, that may not be that easy for, for everyone to be able to afford. So this is something that I read an article that, that indicated that, you know, this eventually could have a very large impact in Southern California with regard to our housing stock and, and affordability and the reduction, basically, or upgrading from R1 to a minimum of R2 for each lot. But it probably will happen over a long period of time. Any other comments?
Well, can I make, make another comment before we go on to someone else? You don't have to go very far to see what's happened in adjacent, an adjacent city to our north, where there were sing, just robust state, stables, single-family neighborhoods that were essentially destroyed when they were allowed to do multifamily housing. They changed, to change the zoning and put multifamily in. And it just destroyed neighborhoods. It created parking issues where there were none. And it impacted the parks in the neighborhood. You know, my, my granddaughter, when she was in college, she lived in downtown Long Beach, near downtown. And she had to park over a mile away from her apartment and skateboard after school to get to her apartment in the evening. So, you know, that's kind of an extreme, but, you know, it's, I see that maybe happening if we can't have parking. Parking is a big issue here. I, I, I could go on, and I won't. Thank you for letting me express my thoughts.
You're, no problem. I mean, we, we all, I think, have shared the same feelings with regard to potential impacts to us. Okay, so at this point, then, I'll open the public hearing. Yes, shall we?
I had a few questions, but if you wanted to open the public hearing, you can do that.
No, go ahead.
I, I wanted to, I wanted to agree with Sandra. I think parking is a, is a big, big problem because, you know, even in, in College Park East, we have some large homes when there's a lot of people with a lot of cars. It creates a problem already. So I see parking as, as being a really big issue, too. I, and I agree with SB nine and SB ten coming up, that those things can just, can, can just do havoc on our neighborhoods if, if they're, if they're passed. So I agree with that. I, I want to thank Barry Curtis for answering some of my questions I had with this. I did have a couple more. One of them, in, in the staff report, it said that the ADU may be denied on the grounds of water, sewer, traffic flow, or public safety, but then it went on to say, basically, if you're putting one in your backyard, you just call up the water department, get an okay, and depending on whether it's attached or detached, have a meter, whatever. So it didn't sound like there was really, that those were really restrictions. I was just wondering how those would, in, in what cases those might apply.
Councilmember Sustarsik, really, they'd apply kind of in, in larger issues. We, we wouldn't be, and then it's pretty clear from the legislature and the intent of the legislature that their intent wasn't to stop ADUs for the reasons you put forth. It's, it's more, you know, if there's some, some strong environmental issue for not putting a house, any house on a property. If there's already a house there, I, I think the intent is that an ADU is allowed on that property as well.
Yeah, Barry, if I can just jump in, I mean, there, there are communities in the state where, for example, there are, there is a moratorium on new water connections or new sewer connections because of wastewater problems. And so that would be the only kind of situation, I think, where that water sewer provision would come, would come into play where it's just illegal to establish a new water connection or a new sewer connection for health and safety requirements.
Okay, thank, thank you. And, and I know that when these, these laws passed a couple years ago, I was told Westminster had a couple projects going. I know you're new, so you may not be familiar, but they were putting three units on a lot. So I was wondering how that would work. You would have a, you would, you would build a new single, they may have been, I wasn't sure if they're conversions of a already existing building, or if they'd be building a new building with an ADU and a junior ADU in them, but so I guess whatever is possible. Let's see. The other question, and, and the reason I was asking the questions about the junior ADUs is I'm familiar, it's actually also in Long Beach, with a property, my, my daughter was recently house hunting, and there's a property in her neighborhood where it was a fixer-upper that drew a lot of interest, and the high bid essentially took a, a small house that had turned its garage, attached garage into a family room, and the investor who bought it turned it into a, a primary residence with an attached JADU. And I saw each one of those listed separately for rent. So that would seem to not be legal to me, a five hundred square foot AD, junior ADU attached to a house. But anyway, that's, that's part of my, you know, you have young people trying to get a house, and then you have investors coming in, and, and the idea, I guess, is by putting more, more units, you bring prices down, but these were, the, the property was bringing in, they were asking over six thousand dollars a month for the combination of the two. So that didn't seem to be low cost to me. But anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor Calm, I got a couple of questions, too, please.
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
Barry, we have a couple of areas that have CCNRs. Would, would they need to be amended? And is there a timeframe for that?
The CCNRs are essentially, the, they're limited, I'm sorry, HOAs are limited from enforcing portions of the CCNRs that relate to the allowability of second units on these properties. I've not seen a timeframe, other than the fact that they're just invalidated. So it would be up to the HOAs to fix that or choose not to enforce those sections that are in conflict with state law.
So they could keep them in there and just ignore them, I guess, if they leave them in there without amending any, any CCNRs?
My knowledge is they would be unenforceable. I don't know if city, city attorney Steele has any different thoughts, but essentially they, they either need to be amended or they can't be enforced.
Right, okay. And then you mentioned the junior ADUs only have shared bathrooms. Is that the case?
That's correct, Mayor Potem. They don't have to have shared bathrooms, but they're allowed to. They have to have, you know, they can be up to five hundred square feet. They have to be inside the main single-family house. And they have to have a kitchen, but they're, they can, by choice, share a bathroom, but they don't have to do that.
And that's just the juniors, the, the, the unattached ADUs would need a bathroom and a kitchen.
Yes, regular, all the rest of the ADUs have to be complete units.
Okay, and then would, would a attached garage be included in the conversion?
Yes, an attached garage can be converted without having to be replaced.
Houses have, you know, in our neighborhood have attached garages, not like the one that you showed. So that would be classified as a conversion, then?
Correct.
Would, would the taxes change accordingly, too? Because obviously, the property value and assessment would be different.
Mayor Potem, I'm not positive on like a junior ADU. You have to pull permits, but I'm not sure how that reassesses if the size of the building doesn't change. It's possible there'd be some minor reassessment there, but other ADUs detached and, and added to the house would, would be assessed as though they were in addition to the property, not as a separate unit. Well, they'd be a separate unit, but basically it's by the square footage of the improvements on the property.
Right, yeah, I would think, you know, all these services would increase with more people, therefore, you know, how are you going to pay for these services? So I would think something would have to change in that realm. And, and I'm in agreement with Councilmember Masalavet that the whole dynamics is going to change. And, you know, my only recommendation for the next two bills coming up is that, you know, we need to vote. We need to vote for issues and not for political parties. I mean, this is what's going on, you know, around here, as we're voting for a party and not on the issue. And I would recommend that we look at these issues when we're deciding to vote, and that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other last comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public on the call wishing to speak?
We have no one signed up to speak.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. So I'll go ahead now, and since we don't have any additional council member questions, we'll call for a motion and a second.
I will move to approve.
All second. So, City Clerk, could we have the vote, please?
Mayor Calm, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sustarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Reluctantly, yes. Only because I have to.
Thank you. That passes virtually five oh.
Just need to read the title, Mayor. It's ordinance number one six nine oh, in order to the City of Seal Beach amending Title XI of the Seal Beach Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Craig. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, we have item P, which is approval of an annual, annual special taxes for Community Facilities District. So I'll call on Finance Director Kelly Telfer to go over this item, please.
Thank you, and good evening again. The item before you tonight is administrative in nature and brought to council each July to levy the annual special tax for this Community Facility, Facilities District, Heron Point. The annual levy is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and covers principal and interest on the outstanding debt in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and administrative costs of ten thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. This concludes my very brief presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? All right, hearing none. Now call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk Harper, may we have a roll call vote? City Clerk, please, roll call vote.
I'm sorry. Mayor Calm, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sustarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passed, I vote. Thank you. Item Q is approval of an annual special taxes for Community Facilities District number two thousand, two dash oh two. We'll call again upon Director Telfer.
The item before you tonight is again administrative in nature and brought to council each July to levy the annual special tax for this Community Facilities District, and this is the Seal Beach Boulevard, Lamson Avenue Landscape Maintenance District. The annual levy is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven and is used to pay for the landscape maintenance of public properties within the district boundaries. This concludes my very brief presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any council member comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sis Darsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes five oh. Last is item R, approval of the annual special taxes for community facilities district, number 2005-01. Director Telfer.
Thank you. Again, this item before you tonight is administrative in nature, and brought to council each July to levy the annual special tax for the Community Facilities District, Pacific Gateway Business Center. Special taxes for the CFD were segregated into two groups, A and B. Special Tax A will satisfy debt service on the bonds, and Special Tax B will satisfy costs related to the maintenance of parks, parkways, and open space within the district. The annual levy for Special Tax A is $546,389, and covers principal and interest on the outstanding debt of $526,050, and administrative costs of $20,339. The annual levy for Special Tax B is $126,378, and is used to pay for the maintenance of the parkways, parks, and open district, uh, open space within the district. This concludes my brief presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, City Clerk?
We would need a motion and a second first.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. Everyone's so eager to do this.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Now, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sis Darsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes five oh. Moving on to item S, which is the formation of the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation. And we'll call upon City Attorney Steele to present us with this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Um, the idea behind this item is to, uh, form an independent nonprofit foundation, uh, that would be available to own and maintain, and program for historical resources in the city. Um, as you know, a few years ago, the city, um, acquired the Little Blue House, and with the help of, um, many in the community, restored it and moved it to the Green Belt. Um, and there are other, um, historic resources in the city that could benefit from a sort of overall organization that was a nonprofit foundation. So the private philanthropy and, um, fundraising could help, um, maintain those, um, resources for the community to enjoy years into the future. So, um, the idea here is that the city council would consider and, um, authorize the filing of the Articles of Incorporation that are included in your packet, as well as, um, signing off on the initial, um, bylaws document that would ultimately be presented to the new Board of Directors of this foundation. Um, the Board of Directors is, is provided in the bylaws would be, um, between five and 15 individuals in the community. Uh, directors could not be, um, related by blood or marriage to each other, um, to, to maintain independence, as well as, um, direct, directors could not be employees or elected officials of, of the city, to ensure that this truly is, uh, an independent, uh, hopefully 501(c)(3), uh, nonprofit foundation. Many cities have formed, um, independent corporations like this for, um, similar purposes. I have been involved in, uh, the formation of, of a number of them, and these are pretty standard corporate bylaws for a, um, city form 501(c)(3). The idea would be that if the council approves, uh, these documents, then, um, through a process that the council can discuss, you would, um, appoint the initial five members of the Board of Directors, and then the corporation would live on its own independently, with support from the city, obviously, but not controlled by the city to maintain an independence, um, uh, organization to, to handle these functions. So we have prepared, uh, the documents for your consideration, and also, um, Resolution 7185, and if the council, uh, approves of the concept and the, uh, filing of the Articles of Incorporation, then the appropriate motion would be to adopt that resolution. The City Clerk would incorporate the, the foundation by filing the articles, and it would be, uh, the council's pleasure as to how to, um, appoint the initial Board of Directors. So, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have, uh, any council member comments or questions? Uh, well, I have one. Uh, what I would like to see happen is, uh, the first thing would be for the council to, uh, decide whether we, um, want to have the initial board, um, made up of one member from each district, or whether they could be simply at large. And I would suggest then, a, um, a news release that would, um, solicit letters, uh, by the public, that would be interested in serving on the board, that would then come, uh, to the City Clerk, and we would then, after whatever time limit we want to set, whether it's a month from now, or whatever, and then, uh, the, uh, council could review the applicants, and we could make, make the selection of the initial board. So any comments about my comment?
It, if it's at large, would it make sense to have one council member as part of that group?
I, I think the intent, uh, Tom, is that, that a member of the city council, um, could be, or, or city staff, depending on, on our pleasure, um, would be a non-voting, uh, member. And would, would attend the board meetings and so forth, but would not have any particular vote. It would be more to, I, I think to, um, you know, offer assistance in terms of the city's role in whatever, uh, projects or needs that the board may have.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think my feeling is, I, I would just as soon see them be at large, because I would like, because of the nature of the committee, I would, I would, uh, think that the best thing would be to have people that are very interested, enthusiastic, and it, it could, they could be from any district, multiple districts, but I would like to maybe find the people that are most interested in, in carrying on with this, and fundraising, and whatever, it takes special people, so, uh, anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mike, Vera Papa, do you have any?
No, I, I, you know, I initially liked the, the one person from one district, just to kind of kick it off, and just see, you know, how best they would feel fit for the, um, rest of it. I, I'm kind of open to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Masalavet, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, I think the at-large option is probably the best way to go. Expressing an interest, uh, in it, it has a lot to do with who gets chosen for that. And I think if all five of us can review, um, the letters from people who want to be appointed, we'll, we'll all know some of them, uh, maybe others will know all of them, but we, um, I think we can provide that kind of direction in terms of, um, enthusiasm for the group, and making sure that there is enthusiasm within the group. So, yeah.
I would agree. Um, another advantage would be if we have, um, you know, members of the community at large that, uh, have some, some in, well, not only interest, but perhaps have some background in working for, or being involved in nonprofits, um, who can, uh, you know, make, uh, good assessments and judgments with whatever items or, uh, entities are put into the, uh, the foundation that need to be managed and fundraised for. And, and it also would give a, uh, an initial pool of talent, so that, uh, once the initial five are appointed, um, that if it was decided, maybe initially, that they thought, well, we need to, we need at least five more people to handle all the work that needs to be done, and they would have, you know, an existing pool of people that were already interested.
That's a good idea.
So when you say at-large, then, then it, to me, it sounds like they would, um, provide letters of, of some sort, and then we would pick five, um, a, a five-panel member, is that, or a board, is that what you do? And would that be yearly, or how would that?
No, initially, the...
All I concern I have is, if you pick the initial five, they never leave, you know, and meanwhile, we're changing, and they're kind of, you know, morphing into these semi-permanent roles all over again, and then they become even more qualified because they've been there. And where do we get, you know, other residents involved, just because they don't have 501(c)(3) experience, or they never, you know? They don't have any old pictures, they can't be a part of the community in that sense, I think, I think it, I like to have a balanced approach, and then they can kind of decide if the at-large would be beneficial, but...
Well, I, the only...
I didn't, I didn't want it to become like, you know, I got more credentials than you do, therefore, I should be picked, and then it kind of gets swayed one way or the other, and then, before we know it...
Well, keep in mind that the council is only appointing the initial five people.
Yeah.
And, and the, uh, in the bylaws, the, uh, the board is going to meet and have elections every year. And, and we, as council people, whomever are sitting in our seats, um, won't have any say-so with regard to that. So it's, um, it's really the initial five people that we're looking to appoint. And, you know, it may be that, once we have this list of people, candidates to choose from, that it may work out that there's one in each district that really fits the bill, but I would hate to be restricted on, on just doing it by district, where you might not have, uh, particularly, um, you might not have the best candidate, in a particular district, but you're gonna have to appoint them because of the one person, one district. And, you know, but I, I really want to, you know, sort of step aside a bit, since, you know, the, uh, the first item, which is the little turquoise, I guess, now house, is in District One. But that's, that's my thought. I don't know, Craig, if you have anything else to say with regard to sort of the, uh, the safety net that's embedded in the bylaws?
Well, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is that with regard to the longevity of, of, uh, people on the board, there's a, each, each term is, is for three years, and there's a limit of two terms. So the maximum somebody could serve on the board is a, uh, is a total of two, three-year, um, terms. So there would be some kind of, you know, natural rotation. And then, then the second thing is, as to qualifications of the directors. We put a provision in that, um, said that, um, directors would be, would preferably, and the word is preferably, so it's not a requirement, but preferably have experience with historic preservation, fundraising, nonprofit management, or education. And we also allow for the possibility that a director may not actually be a resident of the city. And, and the reason for that is that sometimes in these, um, special purpose foundations, you find out that, just as an example, maybe there's a historian at a university somewhere who doesn't live in Seal Beach, but is an authority on the history of Alameda's Bay, for example, I mean, I'm just making this up, but you want to at least have the option, um, in a foundation like this, to, um, to bring that person, uh, on, on board, if the board decides to do so. So, um, those are the two kind of, uh, guardrails that are, that are in the, um, the document right now.
And additionally, if I'm correct, there will be associates. Um, they're not being called, I believe, Craig, members per se, but they're, uh, what we would kind of refer to as members, you know, people that, that the board has the authority to vote on the management of the group, but there is room for any number of people to be an associate of the group.
Uh, that's correct. There are directors who actually have a, a vote in the corporation, and then there are, we specifically say there are no members of the corporation as, as provided in the Corporation's Code, because that creates a whole different set of, um, voting requirements. But there are non-voting associates, meaning that people who can go to meetings, participate in the activities of, uh, of the corporation, but not actually the members of the Board of Directors.
That way you can have, um, talented and experienced people who have served their terms on the board, but can still be an active part of the historic foundation.
Correct.
Good. So Craig, how should we proceed then? Should we, um, can we vote for, um, item S as it's written, or do we, uh, need to tease out the appointment of the board, um, part of it, or?
Well, you, I think you can, uh, vote on the resolution, which is, uh, you know, the two sort of, uh, business steps. One is filing the Articles of Incorporation, and then signing off on the bylaws. And then you can give, then you can separately give the city manager direction as to how you want to handle the, um, appointment process, and, and the staff can then bring that back to you.
Okay, so then, uh, uh, I will, um, do any, any other comments from council first on this? Okay, then, what I would like to do is, I'll call for a, a motion and a second on item S with regard to, uh, you know, the approval of the Articles of Incorporation, and, uh, so forth, and then, uh, to direct, uh, staff to, uh, come up with, uh, a solicitation, whether it's by press release, or any other means, to invite, uh, letters of interest, uh, by the public to be, uh, eligible to be selected, five to be selected by the city council. Does that sound okay?
So that'd be, just to amend that slightly, the motion to approve Resolution 7185, and then give the direction.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. Could I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, and could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sis Darsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes five oh. Thank you. That passes five oh. Item T, this is a discussion regarding proposed amendments. The Seal Beach Municipal Code. About head-in parking only. This was requested by Councilmember Moore for a discussion and there was. Council consensus at the May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one council meeting. To direct staff to bring this item back to council for discussion. So with that, we'll call upon Chief Gonchar. To make the presentation for us and we all hope you're feeling better.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I am feeling much better and Captain Ezra says he'd like to make sure I say that we're heading into. This conversation tonight. So good evening to you, the rest of City Council, City Manager Ingram. City staff and all others listening and watching in tonight. He also wants me to make sure that we can't back out of it either. So. With that, yeah, very appropriate. So next slide, please Dana. Also known as Miss Pennsylvania tonight, by the way. All right, this evening I will provide a presentation regarding head and parking in our city, obviously. The presentation will provide the background of our current ordinance, data and research. We've also prepared a staff report and ordinance should council choose to consider this item any further. Next slide, please Dana. As most of you are aware, in two thousand eighteen, the city of Seal Beach adopted municipal code eight point two zero point zero one five. Which states vehicles shall be parked with the rear of the vehicle oriented closest to the traffic lane and within the space indicated unless otherwise specified by signage. Next slide, please. The intention of this regulation was to have the license plate for each vehicle visible for parking officers and for use of our automated license plate readers, also known. Throughout this presentation as ALPR. This is specifically for parking enforcement. Additionally, this regulation provides a uniform approach to parking, which in turn makes the lots. As they relate to our beaches, a bit safer and a better environment for people to park, unload their vehicles and enjoy the days at the beach. Next slide. Over the last few weeks and within our research, we found that twenty out of fifty states across the United States do not require front license plate like the state of California does. As most of you are aware, as we've discussed in the past, California Vehicle Code fifty two hundred A is specifically written as. Quote, when two license plates are issued by the department for use upon a vehicle, they shall be attached. To the vehicle for which they were issued, one in the front and the other in the rear. Next slide, please Dana. Once the ordinance was adopted, the city placed a total of thirty six signs resulting in twelve for each three beach lots. Each of these signs they read and excuse me, each of these signs read head and parking only. The signs are posted at the single point of entry for each parking lot as well as each pay station. And various posts throughout the parking lots. Specifically, as you can see in front of you, each red X on the slide. Indicates a head-in parking only sign. The total cost for the city spent on this particular code equals thirteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars. For the parking curves, which were installed and prevent drivers from pulling forward through two empty spots, also known as through parking. Additionally, five hundred forty dollar cost for printing all of the thirty six sites. Next slide, please. Our enforcement officially began in October of twenty nineteen. Once the highly visible signs were placed in all high-traffic areas of the beachlots and the concrete. Through parking preventative curbs were installed. From June two thousand eighteen until June two thousand twenty one, there was a total of seventy five thousand seven hundred seventy five. Parking citations issued in the city approximately. From October twenty nineteen to present, there's been a total of four thousand one hundred thirty two citations. Issued for Seal Beach Municipal Code or SBMC eight point two zero point zero one five head-in parking only. As a result, head-in parking citations equate to almost nearly two hundred sixty thousand dollars in fines. Next slide, please. Anticipating a few of the questions relative to the types of citations we issue most frequently, we created the graph before you all to preview. In short, the top five parking citations most frequently issued. From most frequent to less are number one, short-term parking violations. Number two, parking without payment. Number three, head-in parking. Number four, no parking in certain areas, also known as posted, no parking signs or Main Street. Hashes with the yellow indicators or fire extinguishers, handicapped, et cetera. And then lastly, number five, expired registration make up the top five. Next slide, please. All right, the regulation of head-in parking is not uncommon as the cities of Oceanside, Laguna Beach, Paso Robles, San Leandro, El Segundo. Manhattan Beach and Santa Monica have the same regulation. It is also the practice of California State University of Long Beach, Go Beach. And other large parking venues as it relates to angled parking and one-way roadways with parking stalls. In addition, as other cities move towards ALPR technology, they're also moving towards adding head-in parking regulations to their municipal codes. Next slide, please Dana. The state of California has no Vehicle Code section addressing specific head-in parking or pull forward through parking. However, the California Vehicle Code addresses unsafe backing in CVC two-two-one-zero-six, which states in part. No person shall start a vehicle stopped, standing or parked on a highway. Nor shall any person back a vehicle on a highway until such movement can be made with reasonable safety. Next slide, please Dana. A couple citations that we looked through in far as our research was concerned was the American Automobile Association, also known as AAA. We found an article that was provided that warned motorists against pull-forward parking in busy parking lots and cited backing into a stall could be just as dangerous. As backing out of a stall. In two thousand eighteen, AAA posted that nearly seventy six percent of all Americans enter the parking spaces headfirst. They stated this is common practice for most as it is easier to park faster and more convenient to load or unload a vehicle. AAA writes, if people were to back into the stall, this would require a few extra seconds, the use of hazard lights and a certain amount of skill. Necessary or needed to safely complete the maneuver. They cited the use of hazard lights is to notify other vehicles of the pending parking movement. Additionally, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration recommends drivers pay attention to the rules and regulations. Of the parking lots as some may discourage pull-forward parking or backing into a parking stall. Next slide, please Dana. In closing, the staff report prepared for all of you tonight has some proposed language changes in the city of Seal Beach Municipal Code. Eight point two zero point zero one five specifically. Should that be the direction you all provide for us? Lastly, unless there's any other questions for me, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Yes, I had a question.
Sorry, yes, we'll start with, we'll start with you, Councilmember Moore.
Was the original purpose of the current ordinance to make sure that the license plate readers would be able to. Read the license plates?
I wouldn't say primary, but definitely part of it.
Okay, in the staff report, it kind of shows AAA a little ambivalent about. Whether back-end parking is safer or front-end parking is safer. So then doesn't seem like it's necessarily. Safer from the research presented in the staff report. In in the in other cities, are the head-in parking related to slant parking or the. Like in the other cities that you presented. Because I understand, you know, slant parking in one-way street. I could see head-in parking being required in that circumstance.
I think your question is related to, do some cities have this and some cities don't? Is that exactly what you're asking?
No, I'm saying the cities that you said that have head-head in parking only. Are those related to because they have slant parking? They require head in only because they have slant parking or one-way streets?
No, those are the ones that we listed are specific for head and park.
And yeah, I just want to thank you, Chief, for the presentation. And thank, I'd like to thank the city for looking in the other cities that do this and responding. I'd just like to point out that I don't have issues with our parking enforcement personnel. They are following the letter of the laws they're supposed to. I'd also like to thank Craig for writing. I think it was a perfect modification to the ordinance. The current ordinance's original purpose, even it says in the staff report, was to allow. The automation of our new scanning system to allow for the easier parking enforcement and I understand that. And I appreciate that. I think we're all in agreement that that is fine. With continuing to ticket people that do not have their license plate. Easily readable and also for those that have not paid for parking. And I think we all agree that we are also a community-oriented city. And we've gotten many, many emails from lots of residents over the years. Not just one, but, you know, I would say at least once a month that people. Specifically saying they're not coming back to Seal Beach ever again because of this ordinance, because they. Spend the money to pay for parking, they go have a nice dinner. And then they come back and have a sixty dollar ticket. And I know the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. And that it's just not in good spirit, in my opinion. I don't think people that visit our city. And happen to miss the sign for front-end parking, yet pay for the beach parking and have a license plate visible, should get a ticket. So I'd just like to stick with the original intent, the spirit of the law, which was to assist our parking staff. In automating the process so the cameras can detect whether they pay, whether a person paid for parking or not. And if he'd come back to be mayor, if other people have comments, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure. Excellent. How about Councilmember Sis Darsic?
Uh, thank you. I, first of all, I have to admit that I have a, I drive a large van. So I I'm actually a fan of pull-through parking because. I have a rear camera, but sometimes when you're in a busy parking lot, you can't see the pedestrian. I'll park by myself somewhere and I come back and I have two large vehicles on eat, one on either side. And you're backing up and you're backing up and you can't see pedestrians coming. So I like to pull through and I. I'm close to the front of the vehicle and I can see pedestrians. Now, those little bumper things make that unlikely here. I'm not a backer. So this really doesn't have anything to do with me, but I I appreciate that some people want to be careful. You want, when they're coming out. I did make a visit to the beach parking lots on Saturday. It was about three thirty and they were, all the lots were very busy. And very full. I started at First Street and I drove down and I was looking around, but I was also. Dodging pedestrians and pretending to look for a parking place and I really didn't notice any. Any head-in parking signs in the first street lot, but then I didn't know what I was looking for. I went to the Eighth Street lot and I saw one coming in. I saw the little sign. It's they're they're kind of small. And I saw maybe three in that lot. I think I saw one near the pay station and. There there is one by the pay station. I know sometimes when I go to a place and there's a pay station, sometimes you're kind of focusing on what you. Have to do there and and people may miss it, but I did have a question that I submitted that was like. Okay, are, did we have a bunch of citations at first and now they're tapering off as people are learning? And that doesn't seem to be the case. So I wonder if these are all new visitors that come to town. And, you know, get hit because they don't, they don't notice it. So I too is a little dismayed by some of the letters we've gotten. And I know that, you know, that happens sometimes, but I I guess I also was wondering. What, you know, does it really matter whether it's a front license plate or a rear license plate? Can the. Police tell whether a car is registered or not, or whatever from the license number, or if you're just trying to. See if they paid for parking. So anyway, I I, you know, I I don't know what the, what, what the answer is. But, you know, you know, whether it's a warning or something like that, it just seems. It just seems to me that, you know, the locals are probably. Know about this, but are we just hitting all the visitors from out of town? I I don't know. So anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, you know, I visited Laguna Beach last weekend and I did watch how I was going there and I happened to go to Newport Beach. On the following day and I've been to our Eighth Street and Tenth Street parking lot numerous times, you know. Personally, I'm a little hesitant to changing anything at this time. I think. It's there for a reason, not just the the license plate reader, but I did happen to talk to. The car insurance person that I ran into last week and and they highly. Disregard any type of backing in whatsoever because they just happen to be a claims adjuster and they said they deal with these cases all the time. I just, I just think we're opening a can of worms. I mean, I I kind of get it. If you have a license plate in the front, what's the big deal? We kind of made. You know, amends with the with the first street, kind of giving the perimeter, you know, some some leeway, but. You know, it's it's awfully busy there in the wintertime and I think that's kind of when you need the, you know, people just to park. Immediately because it becomes a safety issue and I think that's what our our main concern should be and I think. Just by changing it. And I haven't gotten an email or a letter once, once a month, not that I want to start getting them once a month, but. You know, I did, you know, I hate to change rules just because we get a complaint here and there and I know summertime. Tends to bring on more people and and more complaints and more emails and stuff like that, but. I just think we're, you know, we we try to solve one issue, but we create other issues. So I'm a little less hesitant. To move forward with this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
Mike, I agree one hundred percent. I've watched some people think that they know how to drive. Try and back into a parking space and it really makes your hair curl. So, you know, some of these. People who think they're good at it might not be so good at it. I don't know if there's been any fender benders. From people who back into parking spaces, but I'm, I'm going to go with Mike. I I am really hesitant to change this for five people in one year. Who might be unhappy. And. That's all I have to say about it.
If I could just add onto that. You know, my previous job, I traveled to a lot of different cities and municipalities and parking structures. And, you know, I can name them off the bat Anaheim, Santa Ana, Irvine, you know, and and so on. In our county and they all required front and parking. And I think they did that for a specific reason. It's not just a few cities here and there and willy-nilly. I think. I think it's more common than not. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add a couple of items for thought, you know, initially. You know, based on the, I don't know, maybe four emails that I got from people. Over time that were, you know, not coming back, but the fact that we wrote. You know, forget how many, what, close to three thousand tickets for that offense. I would like us to think about the fact that while we seem to have, looking at slide six. You know, several head-in-only signs spread out around the parking lot. That I would have to assume with so many citations being written, I can't believe that they're all scofflaws. And people are just that don't care and or don't think and they're just going to, you know, back in, just because. So I would have to maybe suggest that we should. Take another look at the visibility of our signs. You know, I ride my bike through the lots, you know, almost every day. And I see people that are backed in, but then when I start, you know, looking for the signs. I don't find them to be that visible and then to compound the issue. Because we've we've allowed a dispensation, justifiably so, for the kite surfers to be able to back in. You know, that's got to add another subtle layer of confusion to the issue. You know, it's, I mean, we're, it's it's a very gray area. You know, look, I don't want us to be known as a city with a speed trap. You know, to draw an analogy. We obviously have. Written several of these tickets and so my suggestion would be that perhaps rather than changing the ordinance. At this time. perhaps rather than changing the ordinance at this time, to, you know, have Julie take another look at the placement and the visibility of the signs. A couple of months ago, I had occasion to go to Santa Monica, and we had to park in a, in a beach lot there, and there were, we were up against a fence separating the parking lot from the beach, and there were no other signs that were visible, but what was visible was about a 12-inch by 12-inch sign by itself in black and white that said "head in only," and it was very clear to me that that was the case. I've always been, you know, a little concerned about our signage, because the signs, you know, ranging from, you know, all of the admonitions of the things that you can't do or shouldn't do in Seal Beach, at the beach, that maybe the, maybe the visibility is not giving folks a fair shot at, at, you know, being made aware that you should just head in.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
I actually appreciate your suggestion for sign change, or sign change. The reality is, I think most of you all received the same email. It was forwarded to each of you individually, so I think a lot of you are thinking the same constituent sent you separate emails, but I believe they are the same email. But in that same email that I think you all saw my Blind CC response to, one of the questions that I had was the same one you do, which is, although we may have 36 signs over three lots, are they well-written enough, or bright enough, or large enough for people to actually see or read? So when we did that onsite or windshield analysis, actually me and the two captains as it relates to this, a lot of the ideas were maybe we should take the head-in parking only portion of that sign and highlight it in yellow, as we are seeing, you know, what would be an average based only on two years of data, an increase in violations and whether they are scofflaw, was an idea to make it a little bit brighter and a little bit more advisable or readable to those people that don't understand it or why we do it. However, at the time, it just so happened that, that I think it was Councilman Moore who brought this forward for us to review it, so we didn't want to spend the extra money that we had already done to make more signs if we were going to repeal it with that. And then number two, I think Councilmember Masalavat brought it up, she doesn't know if there were any accidents. Of the seven traffic accidents that have occurred in the beach lots, six of them were related to DUI or other types of collisions, but the only one that was related specifically parking was a back-end parking positional traffic accident, so I want to make sure that you're aware of that one, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I would, my suggestion would be, before we call for the vote, would be to, as opposed to adopting Ordinance 1691, is to provide alternate direction to staff, and that is to please do a, a more extensive survey of the, the visibility of the signs, you know. Perhaps, you know, a busy Saturday or Sunday, going through the lots and see how, how easy is it to see those signs, to the average person that's coming in and just they're focusing on trying to find a parking space. So that would be, you know, my suggested preference.
Just a few more comments?
Sure, Tom.
The original, I mean, in, in the staff report, it says the intention of this regulation was to have the license plates for each vehicle visible for parking officers and for use of automated license plate readers for parking enforcement. And I have no problem with that. I think most vehicles have license plates on the front and back of their car. The safety issue is questionable, as is in the staff report of the AAA mentions, and so I, and the, the thing that really stands out that Mayor Calmick pointed out is the number of tickets that people are getting. Obviously, something's not working in the, you know, and I don't think that more signs is really going to help. I think we have to change this ordinance, and I think it's not, there's not a safety issue. There's, it's basically just so that the people, the, the original intent of this, which was only written two years ago in 2018, was to assist our parking enforcement with a new automated system to make things easier. And so the, the letter of the law supported a situation where residents and visitors are getting heavily ticketed, even though their license plate is visible and they've paid for parking. So it is our job as council members to represent our residents and what makes the most sense for the city. If this ordinance is only in place so the city can make a lot of money on first-time offense visitors, does that send the right message? According to the staff report, it looks like there's about seven tickets a day getting written, and I have an issue with that, because these people that are supporting our local businesses, and we're punishing them for not, for even though they're trying to abide by the laws. So I don't think that anyone is intentionally violating this ordinance, because it's an ordinance that is not very common. In most parking lots, it's not an issue. In Long Beach, Long Beach and Huntington Beach, you don't have to do this. And if the license plate is still readable, and the visitor resident in the parking lot has also paid for parking, we're giving tickets to those people. So one confusing aspect is in the beach lots, you know, it's, it's hard to, I think people are just fast to get to the beach and not really paying attention to these signs. So I'd like to stick with the original intent, which was to assist our parking staff in automating the process, so the cameras can detect whether people paid for parking or not. And that's, that was the original intent, and I'd like to move forward with what the city attorney put together for this item. So I'll, I'll make the motion to proceed with this.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk Harper, could we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a question first.
Sure.
Tom said that there were seven
There was a second to the motion, I think we need to vote.
No, you can have discussion. It's motion, second, discussion, then vote.
That's correct.
Okay. My question, then, since Tom brought up that, I don't have the staff report in front of me, but have we, how many back-end tickets have we issued in the two-year period per month or per week, or however you calculated it? Do you know that, Phil?
I am going to pull that right up exactly.
4,120.
Yeah, so since the inception of us actually doing the citations, which started in October of 2019, we just pulled the numbers again today. For a total of, excuse me.
While Phil was looking, in 2021, we have issued head-in parking 1,589 in the six months of this year.
Yeah, and then, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor.
No, no, please.
Between October 1st, 2019 to today, we are at 4,132.
Just for back-end?
Just for head-in parking, correct.
Really? Okay.
That makes up about 5%.
Any other last questions or comments? Okay, now, City Clerk, could we have a roll call for the vote, please?
Can we just clarify that the motion would be to introduce Ordinance 1691, read by title along with the way for the rule.
Okay, thank you. Now, could we have the roll call vote?
Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Verapapa, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalava, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, I lost track. I think that
Motion carries. Three to two.
Three to two, thank you.
Okay. We'll just have to read that title. It's Ordinance 1691, an ordinance of the City of Seal Beach, amending Chapter 8.20 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code to amend regulations for head-in parking in city beach parking lots.
Thank you. So tonight, in our adjournment portion, tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of iconic Seal Beach surfboard maker and owner of Harbor Surfboards, Rich Harbor. Rich Harbor, who started one of the most legendary surf shops in Southern California over 60 years ago, died Sunday at 7:00 on July 11th, 2021, surrounded by family and friends at his Seal Beach home. Harbor started shaping boards from scratch back in 1959, after his first board was stolen from his parents' house. He first sold the surfboards out of his parents' garage before opening his own Harbor Surfboards on Main Street in Seal Beach in 1962. That shop now claims to be the longest-running surf shop of its kind in the world. Rich had fans around the world and a cult-like following among surfboard enthusiasts, some who gathered over the years at Harbor Surf Days to ride waves at Bolsa Chica State Beach and sharing stories about his boards, both historic and new designs. On behalf of the City of Seal Beach, we send our condolences to the family and friends of Rich Harbor. We'd now like to share a short video of Harbor Surfboard's 60th Anniversary Celebration. Thank you for that very vintage video. So now we will adjourn the City Council in memory of iconic Seal Beach surfboard maker and owner of Harbor Surfboards, Rich Harbor. And also, we want to acknowledge the passing of Seal Beach resident and former Sun Newspaper editor Dixie Redfern, and condolences to her husband Bob, to Monday, August 9th, 2021, at 5:30 PM, to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and interest and sticking to it. So, good night.
Thank you.